We're rolling.
We're a minute early. We'll make believe it's real. I call the meeting to order, Board of Selectmen for September 19th, 2018. And if you can have a pledge allegiance? A pledge allegiance?
... of the United States of America, and of the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now, I'm going to make a motion to approve the agenda as written. Can I just second on that?
I'll second that.
Okay, and Sue has some issues at work that she has to deal with. She's probably going to be a little bit late. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and we have some minutes from September 5th, 2018. I've looked them over and I'm comfortable with them. I'm going to make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting, September 5th, 2018, as written. Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Any discussion?
Yeah. Item nine, the third item, Mr. Jansky took exception to Mr. Smith's statement that the town is subsidizing the local haulers. He may have stated that, but I don't believe that's exactly what I said. I had a question about subsidizing, which was brought to the selectmen's attention. So, it's not that I said the town was subsidizing him, it's just that he may have interpreted that's what I said.
I had the feeling then that that's what he was doing.
So, I don't know how we would like to correct that, but that is his belief, but that is not the case. I mean, I believe we probably in the past did subsidize to some degree when the equipment was broken up there, but that's neither here nor there at this point.
You might want to say to his interpretation?
That's fine. That's fine.
We said it that way, to his interpretation of Mr. Smith's statement. Okay, any further ones?
That was all I saw.
Okay, as amended, all in favor?
Aye.
We have no correspondence today, which is kind of unusual, but there we are. And I want to go through my report. Old Lime contacting me, the Old Lime area Cable Advisory Council. That's a regional council that involves Lime, Adam Neck, East Adam, and Salem. And it works with Comcast. And we're supposed to have upwards, three or possibly four members on that. We rarely attend, if at all. And the makeup, apparently supposed to be someone who represents, not necessarily a current member, but someone who can represent the Board of Selectmen, someone who can represent the Board of Education, someone from the library who's at large, and then perhaps one other member if we wish. And I wasn't real familiar, I knew they existed, but wasn't really certain about exactly what they were all about, so I called them and talked to them about that. And Peter Sealman, who's the chairman, he said it's a feedback to Comcast to give them an idea of what kind of a job they're doing, what people would like. It also, Comcast makes available a certain amount of money for audiovisual equipment that we might take part in or get a piece of. And they also do some scholarships. Again, apparently put up about $2,000 a year. And all the towns, all the four members have participated at one time or another. At the moment, no one from East Adam's attending. And it's something that he'd like to see us get involved with a little bit more actively. Ernie's was on that, and of course, Ernie is no longer around very much and involved. Michael Gilroy is a member currently, but doesn't seem to attend unless it's up this way. And so, I'm just kind of throwing it out with the idea that we'd like to get some members, get somebody involved with that. Board of Ed has Gary Massey on it. And apparently, he sometimes attends once again when it's in this area. So, at this point, I'm not actually looking for anyone, just making people aware that we're going to try to people that.
Well, I don't have cable, so it might be good to have somebody else that has, might have...
Actually has an active interest.
Exactly.
It's just something's there, so I wanted to throw it out and we'll see what happens with it. Maybe I can talk Sue into it. She's got lots of extra time.
Do you have any idea how often they meet?
They meet quarterly, once every three months. And they're scheduled now for a meeting down in Lime on the 17th, I believe, of October. Interesting organization, one I know very little about. Just going on, I just had a few questions, there's not an awful lot that I wanted to say there. But going through the last meeting, there was a question that Sue had about trying to get a grip on the numbers of trees that are really at risk and coming up with some sort of a program to, what's it going to cost us, how are we going to handle it? We did a presentation on Monday with the Board of Finance and gave them quite a bit of information. And it appears, depending on who you listen to, the state of Connecticut came through, drove 21 miles of our town counting trees, and came up with 134. Now, it wasn't clear whether those were state rows or town rows or just what they were. About six trees per mile. And they indicated that these were more significant trees that might pose a hazard in time that we would have to watch, both oaks and ashes. We've worked on Petticoat Lane, and we came to the conclusion that there was something in the neighborhood of 30 trees that we probably want to remove, that we would need to remove. And we're able to get rid of 12 of those. Now, that's two and a half miles, which works out to about 12 trees per mile. So, my guess is somewhere between, in between, 700 and 1,400 trees is what we're looking at. So, that's an interesting situation. And we're going to be putting together a program of what the options are, the various approaches we might take to it, what they might cost. Board of Finance requested that.
And who's we?
Beth and I.
Okay.
And we were both at that meeting and tasked with coming up with some answers that they could try to deal with. And from what I could see, the issue is not as bad as it might be. We've got a little bit of time, we don't have a lot. The ashes are going to start falling apart probably within a year or two. The oaks might stand a little bit longer, although some questions about how long they're going to stand. And so, we're going to have to move quickly on this, we can't just sit around on it. One of the dilemmas that I think we're going to be confronting is the fact that, from our standpoint, very quickly, the trees are all going to lose their leaves. It becomes more difficult to identify a problem tree. We do know that the ashes are all going to be problems. So, we're going to try to put something together, but just so you're aware that we are indeed moving forward on that.
And I'll reiterate the question I've asked before, is there any movement with the COG or possibly asking for a...
The FEMA thing was actually the Extension Services, the DOT, the Arborists Association, and they were approaching that. But everyone is not very optimistic about that. And FEMA is going to have its hands full right now with what's happened down south. So, it's not the sort of thing they would ordinarily get involved with. Is the state or perhaps the federal government going to get involved at some point? We've got a regional, all across the Northeast, sort of problem. I wouldn't be surprised if that happened. That's something we have to keep in the back of our minds as we're trying to forge whatever mechanism we're going to use. We don't want to get too involved with something that suddenly discover there are options that we couldn't perhaps take advantage of at that point.
And I concur, except that, you know, we have the, we've been hit with a double whammy here in Connecticut, where we had the gypsy maws that did an awful lot of damage here. Before the ashes even showed up, like I said, I counted over 300 trees on, it wasn't that many miles of road. And now, with the ashes dying very rapidly this year, I've seen a lot that have...
And they deteriorate quickly, they're losing the leaves fast.
And so, and they often fall over without any warning at all, once they've died, so...
And we've got another one coming at us, the maples. You start looking, there's a lot of maples in trouble.
Well, there's always been maples, especially near roads due to maple decline.
That's the salt.
Right, so...
What is it, the root rot, the brown rot?
So, anyway, but it's just an issue that is a little bit more imperative, I will say, than maybe what happened where, as the ash, Emerald Ash Borer moved across the country, because they were primarily dealing with ash. You know, here, we're dealing with the oaks, and now, we have the Two Line Chestnut Borer, which has killed a whole bunch of red oaks this year, on top of the white oaks that were killed by the gypsy moss, so...
Anyway, we're going to have a proposal farther down along to help to start to address Going out from there, there was a number of comments that Mr. Moreau brought up, issues for the fire department. And I contacted them, we discussed them. And just to put a little bit of a, I don't know what you call it, explanation of some of what happened, there was a termination that involved drugs. The individual had a charge against him, he hadn't been convicted of anything. The fire department was trying to help him, trying to work through it with him, and he was in very strict probation at that point. Drugs appeared again, and there was instant termination. I would say within 10 minutes of the awareness that it had happened. And I was contacted and confirmed what they had done, agreed with it, and totally gone on an almost instant basis, once that occurred. There's some discussion of alcohol at the fire department. Alcohol is not permitted on the property or in the buildings of any town location. The exception is when the Board of Selectmen grants permission for it to be there, and strictly beer and wine. And the only case where alcohol has been available at the fire department was the wet down last fall, and that was strictly beer, and that was approved by the Board of Selectmen. And to my knowledge, that does not occur. If it did, it would be a major deal. There's also some questions about smoking. Smoking is forbidden in all buildings and vehicles that belong to the town. And that's regardless, we don't grant permission for that to anyone. Some discussion about a ladder truck, that there was questions being asked on that. When I asked people, everyone was in agreement that we are not going to be getting a ladder truck, that we go out and we buy. And the question was, gee, is there some grants out there that might buy us a ladder truck, federal grants? Apparently, there'd been a rumor of such a thing. There is a large fire vehicle in the budget, out, two or four years out right now. And I think when we get into the budget this year, I want to know more about that, just what it is. I'm not in favor of a ladder truck, I don't really see where it serves any purpose to the town. And so, I'm going to want to know what that vehicle's all about and why it's there. But we're going to have that opportunity with the budget. Some discussion about the car. And this is the LTD that's been painted up as being used by the fire department. And that is currently located up to Firehouse Number Two. It's not outside any longer. And all of the duty officers have keys for it and have access to it for use in a emergency or in a circumstance where they feel it's necessary. So, it's not limited to a single individual that's driving it. I had that impression myself, but apparently not. And there was a question about a jet ski last fall. Apparently, the police department had been given a jet ski, donated one. And somewhere within the police department, they came to the conclusion, they didn't really need it any longer, they offered it to the fire department. And it got moved over to Firehouse Number One. It actually got taken out and being used, still having the police logo on it. When I discovered that, I made it real clear, I said, under no circumstances can you be out there pretending to be the police or appearing to be the police. At the very least, that would have to, you know, removed. And then, it became clear that the terms that we got the jet ski under seemed to restrict it to strictly the fire department, at which point I said, get it back.
Restricted to the fire department or restricted to the police department?
No, I'm sorry, to the police department, strictly to the police department. And I said, until that's resolved, get it back where it started from, which is where it is right now. And it was returned immediately after I told them that. But we don't need people out there driving around something that appears to be the police, and it's not. And one last issue that was raised, J.D. Sarnik has been made the deputy fire marshal. And in the case of fires, where a fire marshal is in order, on instruction, he'll go out doing that. He's not going as a volunteer fireman, he's not going as a paid staff. He is, however, on the clock as a paid employee for the, as a fire marshal. And that is consistent with his responsibilities as a deputy fire marshal. So, you may see him there, but that's the only reason that he's involved in a circumstance like that. If he were on duty as a paid staff, then it would be appropriate for him to be there as paid staff. And one other item that's of some great interest, Middlesex County Revitalization Commission. And I was down there this morning, we had a meeting. And basically, what they do is they receive funds from the state of Connecticut, substantial funds, for the purpose of enhancing existing businesses. If someone wants to expand, they can go up there and they can file and apply to get some of the money and get a little bit of help, it's a loan, you have to pay it back. And there's, you know, the full process, collateral, everything's involved with it. This morning, we agreed to a $300,000 loan for a operation that's, actually, it was going to be in Saybrook, now it's going to be up in Deep River. And they're doing basically cosmetics and how do you apply cosmetics, education, and supplies. And they just simply, they've got a business right now that's small, they want to enlarge it substantially, and the money was made available to them. They went through quite an elaborate process. There's another $400,000 sitting there that MCRC would very much like to get out, it's available. The state has them tasked with getting it out by the end of this year. So, if you know of any business that's interested in expanding, would like to get a little bit of help in the process, here's an opportunity for us. I made Bob Kastner aware of that a month ago, so he's fully aware of it. I thought maybe we needed to put it out at a higher level and let people know that it's there. Why on earth not us? And there are a couple of operations in town that have taken advantage of it and are currently making use of it. And if it's $10,000 or it's $100,000, it's there. Something to be very much aware of. That's as much as I have. Any comments on that, Rob?
No, no, I think, I think if people are made aware of it, there will be definite interest. You know, I don't know if Staley's have availed themselves of it in the past, but I'm thinking about they're talking about expansion, and there are probably others that are in the same situation, so...
I mean, this, I just should not mention the businesses, but they're some small, some larger.
Yep.
It's a great opportunity, it's something that we need to be aware of. And especially at this point, where we're looking to expand what we've got. Okay, that done, I'm going to come back to that in a moment. We're on to citizens' concerns, do we have anything?
Jay Moreau, Fire Department, Alpharetta, Missouri. First, I'd like to thank you for addressing some of my questions from last month. I did know that the car had been moved into company two, where it really kind of belongs. I know somebody must have spoken to Brian Hall, because he met by my house in a much reduced speed the other night on his way to the mall, and I'm glad for all the residents and people in town that he's not driving the car as fast as he used to be. I do have a few more concerns, and I do have a couple of questions about even your answers to those questions. What is the, I don't want to call it disciplinary action, but what's the avenue for continued smoking on the town property? But I mean, it's not supposed to be happening. We have employees and members of the volunteer fire department still smoking in buildings and vehicles and on town grounds. There has to be some type of avenue to remedy that.
Well, to be perfectly honest, last spring, I executed discipline for smoking in one of our buildings. If I'm aware of it, and it can be shown that it actually occurred, we do discipline.
So, we don't need butt cans outside the doors of the firehouses?
I'm sorry?
We don't need the butt cans outside the doors of the firehouses anymore, because there shouldn't be any smoking?
Outside of the building, as long as you're not in a vehicle or in the building, our ordinance doesn't really say that you can't do it. So, so long as it's outside of the building.
Another question I had, and I'm going to refer over to some Board of Fire Commissioner minutes and some Board of Selectmen minutes, some of my next comments. Back in February, Mike Davis brought up before the Board of Fire Commissioners, then asked, is there a better way to ensure appropriate accounting of hours worked by the career staff? And he offered two approaches, from a time clock to a computer system. Shortly after that, I informed you that we have indeed always used a time clock and time codes, turned in weekly to dawn. My understanding now, there's no more time clock used by the paid staff. It went away, and this already caused a problem the other day. So, if it was good for the previous and some current employees, then I don't understand why it's not in use now. Secondly, I know John Sarnik is a deputy fire marshal, and he has your blessing and the fire marshal's blessing, that's one thing, but he's doing inspections on duty, when he's on duty as a paid staff. Now, there's sometimes no issue with that. Fire officers in certain towns are inspectors, and they do inspections on duty. But when we're limited to paid staff having to respond to every medical call and fire call in our town, we can't have them separated by a huge distance from either the ambulance station or each other.
Your suggestion is doing fire marshal's inspections while he's being paid?
While he's being a paid firefighter.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Look into that and see what's going on, make sure it stops if it's happening.
Okay. The jet ski was addressed, that goes in the minutes as well. Fireboat, I kind of did, I've spoken about that I really didn't buy into the whole bid process. And I look back at some Board of Fire Commissioner minutes. And in March of 2018, under old business, for the Board of Fire Commissioners, red fireboat purchase. Chief Alden notes, he is getting concerned with safety, possible liability issues, that the boat is not purchased in a timely manner. The boat is in Westbrook, is in stock, but will need to be fitted with appropriate equipment, lettering, and lengthy process. If we try to expedite the process from here, we'll be in better state to cover the town. So, this was March, they did not come before the Board of Fire, of Selectmen until April to request a bid waiver. When the bid finally came in, of course, they said they had tested the boat. So, they had this boat already picked out long before they did the bids. It's just not proper. Wish they would go about things the proper way. And it's in their minutes, and it's indisputable. I have an issue that I don't, didn't get an answer to, that I am curious as a former employee. Did someone in Town Hall, either you and it or someone else in Finance, direct John Sarnik to only give the part-time employees one day of work a week? You yourself had thanked Eric and Ryan for all the hours they've been in, but it was gone after I had left. Now, they're getting one day a week. John Sarnik says it's being directed out of Town Hall. I don't know if that's true, but I don't think it's proper. Part-timers used to work a rotating, three days one week, two days the other. And now, those employees who have to work for 13, six, six, and five years are down to one day a week. If that's the way you deem it, then fine, but he says it's coming out of Town Hall. Next, I understand that that member was terminated after his second arrest. What concerns me about Brian Hall's response, and he's had a news, is that he said it was out of character. It's not out of character for that individual, it's happened multiple times. It happened before he was of age. Our fire chief thinks that that's out of character for the volunteer fireman, that he does not have his eyes open to what's going on around him. It's because young guys like him, when they were much younger, pulled many of the same stunts. They were suspended, were removed from the departments, never supposed to be officers, and now, there's the chief, the deputy chief, and our paid cap. And if one member of our volunteer fire department happens to be doing drugs, there's more than one. I think all of public safety should be drug tested, the volunteer fire department, the police department, and the career staff. I believe that's it. Thank you for your response to those other questions.
All I can offer, just the one thing, is that, so far as I can make it happen, anyone who's involved with drugs will be gone as quickly as we know it. That's not to be tolerated.
Two things to follow up with Jay, fire department. Two Saturdays ago, at about 7:30, 8 o'clock in the morning, at Dunkin' Donuts over in Hallow, there was a tanker, an engine truck, and Brian Hall in his car. They were in uniform, they were all hanging out in parking lots, smoking, having a coffee and everything, which you did not look good to begin with. But secondly, when they left the parking lot, which was packed, Saturday morning, they were swinging on the air horn like monkeys.
They were doing what?
Swinging on the air, they had the air horns going on the trucks as they're pulling out of the parking lot and stopped traffic so they could all pull up. It gave a really bad impression. The comments from inside the store were like, well, they're those East Adam's finest. So, if they're going to leave town to get coffee, first of all, if something had happened, the bridge was open, because it's that time of year where the boats are being moved up, we've got the majority of our equipment and employees across the river. we've got the majority of our equipment and employees across the river. Secondly, when they're out of public, they're representing the town of East Hallow, and they need to act that way. And as far as the, of being, public safety being tested, I think any employee who drives a town vehicle should be drug tested because they're putting everybody at liability, and they're putting the town at risk. Other, but you go to both employers, they do random drug testing, there's no reason why the town can't. And then my next thing is, we've talked previously about this building not being ADA compliant. Do you know when their repair to the parking lot's going to happen, the sidewalks, is that going to happen sometime soon?
You mean, for this building?
Yes.
I do know they're examining it, they're working on it and talking about it. I don't know exactly when it's going to happen.
And if we go over the one year for the warranty, is it still going to be honored because it's been addressed before then?
You've got to talk to the municipal office building committee, because they still own it.
I can't find any information online for them, like when their meeting minutes, their agendas, when they need, where do you find us?
It's posted?
Yeah, posted. They need them second reports on Thursday, and if they don't meet, they should be posting a cancellation agenda.
Where are the meeting minutes?
That I can't tell you. I don't do them, and they go to DevNet, so. I think if you look on the calendar, for each of the, each of the meeting dates, it'll give you the agenda and the minutes for three years.
It's just the agenda, yeah.
So, because I know Ruth does the minutes, because she sends them out to everybody, and I know Deb gets them, so, you know.
Yeah, it's just the, it's just the agenda. They said they were going to have a meeting on thirteenth this month, but it wasn't posted anywhere, or I don't know, it's a playtime.
Yeah, I believe, Ron, do you know if they canceled that meeting?
Something's been posted then, right?
I do agree with that, yes.
And we've been in this building many months now, and we're still addressing the same Cindy reported that we closed on the USDA loan last week. How did we close on a loan when this building's not compliant?
I'm sorry, once again, I can't hear you.
Cindy stated at the Board Finance meeting Monday night that we closed on a $13.8 million loan with the USDA last week.
Yes, we did.
How did we close on a loan when the US government, this building is not ADA compliant?
It's not what?
ADA compliant.
That's, it's not going to preclude making it ADA compliant. Any others? Yes, sir.
Eric Dill, 166 BB. Just want to revisit a couple items that I brought up probably a couple years ago. First subject would be Chatham Health. I'd like for it to consider, as I stated previous, to exit that relationship and go back to the relationship we had of hiring a full-time building inspector slash sanitarian. As far as money is concerned, again, these are old numbers, and I have revisited the subject, but I think now's the time maybe to re-look at this. I think we were talking six figures to be in this health district. I don't know if that's changed or not. I know one of the towns left, which left us with a little bit more of a burden financially. And I was kind of hoping that we would really seriously consider going this route. We already have a vehicle, and I would even be for compensating the employee very well to do this multi-house job. Still have it be a money saver, even if you pay the person six figures, it's still a money saver, because they're doing two roles. And again, that's just that thought. Second issue, or second subject, would be the, and I guess you're going to talk about it a little bit, would be the village. In the paper, I, you know, you read the articles and so forth about some breweries and so forth, and rumor has it that this is a done bid. This is what is going to happen with that area. I just want to confirm, and I don't know if this is the venue to do that, but I'd like to confirm that before anything happens with that village, that it will be going to public comment, to town meeting before anything. I have always had this opinion, and I had this with your predecessor, and I told him point-blank that it's the town's most valuable piece of property. You don't, they don't make riverfront property anymore, as far as I know. And it's the only one we have. And so let's, let's kind of be very protective of it. I don't necessarily know that I have all the answers as far as whether it's best to sell or lease, but I'm not in favor of selling. But I'm not the majority either, so I would like to at least be assured that the townspeople, the majority of the townspeople, will have a chance to vote and say whether or not it's a good idea to sell or lease.
Okay. You're just, you're just a little step ahead of us on that, because once we get an unfinished business, we're going to talk about the revitalization committee. But they will, at their next meeting, and don't ask me when it is, it's coming up.
Twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth. Have invited the public to come in and offer their suggestions. What would we like to, what would you like to see it done with? I've asked them, in joint with Jimmy Ventress, to prepare an RFP, a Request for Proposals. That's basically, we're here, here's the parameters, we're putting it together right now, we're going to use Groton as the design item, they've got a piece of property they're doing right now, just like, I shouldn't say just like, but along the same idea of what we're doing. And it gives you a pretty good idea of exactly what you need to include in the RFP. RFP is not a, here's what we're looking for, here's what we want to do with it. It's, what do you think you can do with it? And here's what you're going to, what you're going to get. This is what's in the soil, this is what's in the buildings, this is where it is, here's how much acres you got, here's the limitations on it, a description of what it is. That's going to go out, and we're going to be requesting that people come back and offer us proposals. That's what an RFP is all about. And we have that, one unit, one group of people, yes, very interested. They've presented what is probably going to be a lot of their RFP a couple of times around, and I've seen it. It's very interesting. There's others that are interested. We want to know what they've got to offer. And we're going to have public hearings, and I would venture a guess, eventually, when we get a sense of where we're going and what people would like, probably going to go to a, I personally would prefer a town meeting than go to referendum. It may or may not evolve that way, but that's what I would prefer and what I'm going to push for. And that's a full-blown, what does the town want? How do they want that land used? But first of all, we're going to go through this RFP process and find out what's out there. How would you use the land if you got it? You going to build us a Home Depot on it? I don't think that's going to go very far in terms of referendum. But let's see what the ideas are. Let's see what's out there. And it may be a little bit surprising what happens on the twenty-sixth at the revitalization meeting, the ideas that come from the floor. And of course, if you've got ideas, that's wonderful. You have to have someone who's willing to go ahead and do it and make the investment. And we're going to hold whoever winds up with it real tight. It isn't just a question of coming in here with a good idea. You better show us that you can actually do it. You got the money behind you, you've got the time, you've got the knowledge, the experience, whatever it takes, so that you can go to completion. And bonding is one way that we can make sure that we're not going to have someone come in here, finish a half a project and say, gee, I'm out of money. Will the town bail me out? Will the state bail me out? Who'll help me? We don't need that. So, no, this is, a lot more going to go on before it's done. Would I like to see it done quickly? Yeah, I would. We don't need that sitting down there forever derelict. So, that's going to be coming along very quickly now. We're at that point where we can start, start moving into it. Okay? Any other? Randy?
Just on that subject, Emmett, is Bill Gares, the chairman of the revitalization committee?
Yes, he is.
Has he been made aware that Jim Ventress is working on this?
I made him aware at the last meeting. I said, you and Jim are, you know, the revitalization committee and Jim are tasked with it.
Last communication I had with Bill, he had, apparently has had no communication with Jim, just to provide an input.
Jim is just getting started on it right now. We just got the Groton plan. I'll talk to him tomorrow and make sure that he's moving forward.
Thanks.
Okay, moving forward to the unfinished business. East Hallow Village Revitalization Committee update. Kind of gave that to you. And let's see if there's something else here that I should comment on. You've got a letter in there describing from Bill, and this is his invitation, going to appear in the East Hallow News this week, to the town to show up and let us know what you think. So that's going to be there. We're going to have it posted. Hopefully, we'll get a good turnout. We'll find out what people feel, what they're looking for. And if they come up with a great idea that nobody's thought of, hopefully, somebody will pick up with it and run with it. Can we afford to do it? Can we afford to do all the building, to lease it out after the fact? I don't know. That's a pretty big nut. It may be that we wind up having to sell it to get what we want. And maybe we sell the whole thing, maybe we don't sell the frontage, maybe we sell who knows what. A lot of different options, and we're just going to be looking for input, looking for ideas, looking for those proposals to come forth.
Emmett, I think Sue and I had asked about the Main Street group.
I've been trying to get ahold of Bill myself and haven't been able to, to see if they still want that. And hopefully, he'll let me know. It's about 500 bucks. I don't think it's a bad investment, but I don't want to go ahead with it without him saying, yeah, we want that. Okay? All right. Transfer station. We're looking to move forward on that, and... First thing, we've got, Randy had suggested, you've seen the proposal, a whole different way to get into the transfer station and to operate, kind of going backwards almost from what we're doing right now. I brought that to Beth, I brought it to Don up there. Don has, curiously enough, I wasn't aware of it. It's exactly what I wanted to do years ago, and nobody ever wanted to do it. Well, here we go. I've tasked Beth and Don with putting together a plan that'll make it work, make it happen. The goal with it is to gain control of stickers so we can inspect every single vehicle, and to make certain that anyone who's going up and back to the bulky ways has been inspected. We know what's on the truck. If it needs to be weighed, and they need to pay, they're going to do that. The idea is to gain full control over what's going in there. That's a relatively easy thing for us to do. And I would hope that within the next month, couple of months, we're going to be doing that. Just a matter of reversing the flow. They are very energetically checking stickers right now, and very energetically making sure things are getting weighed. And it's been put to them very firmly that they will do that. They're getting some complaints out of it. One of the particular ones is particularly police who work perhaps in another town, who would rather not have a sticker on their vehicle. And what I'm proposing to them is that, okay, we'll give you a piece of plastic, piece of thermite or whatever, with your sticker on it, your license number on it, and you can put it on your dash, and you'll get that by coming down and talking to me. Don, Jared, Keenan up there are not going to issue those. They feel it's that important, they want it, come on down and talk to me. And if they convince me, they'll get one. Strikes me as how you make sure that it's pretty important to them. So that's, that's kind of what we're doing there. Beyond that, we got a very interesting letter back from our attorney. This is Rod Richards, and he puts it, he says, "The only explicit provision," and this is on the bag system that we'd like to implement, authorizing the Board of Selectmen to establish a general fee is Section 7, 279-10B, or a number of other specific fees such as licenses for commercial haulers, tires, stumps. 10B is oddly worded, though, allowing the Board to set a fee for each assessed material for the solid waste facility. If each assessed material includes a single bag of trash, I think the Board could set a bag fee. We could just arbitrarily say, you're going to go to bags. Does anyone know what was intended by that section? I rather doubt there's anyone left who does. It's a very old section to it. And I've got the section that he's referencing. It says, "The Board of Selectmen is authorized to adopt reasonable rules and regulations to put this article into effect. Such regulations shall be in writing and shall be effective upon the publication in a newspaper having a general circulation in the town of East Hallow. The Board of Selectmen is authorized to determine the amount of fee per each assessed material based on the actual disposal cost to the town of East Hallow." And the question is, is a bag considered a fee? And, yeah, I think that probably we could capriciously put it into effect, say we're going to do it.
I wouldn't use the word capriciously, but I would say that we could put it into effect.
Whatever, I mean, we could just do it.
Okay. I think, I think that was discussed several months ago, but I think it's good that we're moving forward.
Yeah, I'm not so sure about this. I'm not comfortable with it. And I'm also not comfortable with what might be the reaction. I think that the argument is strong enough so that we can go to the people and make that argument. And what I'd like to propose, and I'm not going to look for a date now, we've got the transfer station, we've got the animal ordinance, we've got the trailer ordinance. I'd like to go to a public meeting, a public hearing, and just present these to the people of the town, and just get the reaction, get a sense of what they, they want to do. And I think, given what's on our schedule, on our plate right now, probably sometime later in October is probably the best time.
I think we need to do it before we get into the budget season, too.
Yeah, it's got to be done ahead of Christmas. So I think we should be in that position.
So one of the things on the, the bag discussion is, I think it wouldn't hurt us to include a sunset clause on it, where it could be reviewed after three years or whatever, and see if it's working or not working.
Oh, you're more generous than I. I was thinking a year.
Well.
But whatever.
A year doesn't necessarily give you much time to put things together and see the results.
Yeah.
So, I think that would go a long way towards...
Inducing people to go with it.
Correct.
And we have commitments, and part of the deal, I've spoken with Bahilo and with Janzke both, and we have commitments that if we go to a bag system, they feel that the extra cost, the extra effort that's involved with that would enhance their position, and that things would balance out for them, and they would proceed to handle their own disposal. They'd be looking for a little bit of help for a while while the transition was going on, tipping fees or something, and within a few months, they'd be taking over and wouldn't be using the transfer station at all. That's where real savings for us are. And...
Well, there's no question, I think, you know, there's going to be a transition period and an education period, but I think once that's in place, I mean, be able to make a nice break.
Yeah, I think we're at a point where we need to start moving into that and get it done.
I concur. Couple things on Randy's design. I spent some time wandering around up at the transfer station, and I think it's a really good idea. The, what would now become the exit from the parking area, which is formerly the entrance to the, I shouldn't say parking area, to where the recyclables and trash are. If you move it closer to the garage building or large metal building, it'll be easy to make, go straight across and then into the scale. So that recommendation, that that gets moved. And then, then, you know, someone that just has to go up back or whatever would also make that turn.
We've looked at it and tried to calculate the radiuses.
Yeah.
A little bit of paving and pulling it back towards that building.
Yeah, if you pull it back there and even move the tank that, there's a propane tank there.
And, believe it or not, there's a little skirt of concrete that sticks out from the building, and that tank would tuck in behind it, be very safe. Because right now where it is, somebody could run into it.
Yeah, that's why it would have to be moved or...
And you could actually put it in a far safer location if you moved it.
So I think that's good. And then it also allows vehicles, because I think long-term, you're going to want to get all those open-top dumpsters down there. When I say there, on the, at the main building and hopper area, and the exit road, or the former road that goes to the back where the commercial haulers use the dump, you could, with the equipment we have on hand with the town crew, you could re-establish much the same type of setup as you have up back, and then consolidate everything in the same place.
Get it down below, make sense out of it.
Yep.
And a lot of changes that might be appropriate up there as well.
Yeah. Yeah.
Over time, you know, and it's, I can see where it can all go and how it can fit together very, very nicely. But anyway, we're looking to do that. I'm guessing that at the next Board of Selectmen meeting, I'll be looking for a particular date for the public meeting.
Excellent.
Okay.
And we should have a contract by then also, hopefully, with the folks up there?
I really can't get into that because those are still under...
Well, I understand. I understand that. But I'm just saying, hopefully, we'll have a contract so that there won't be any issues or unknowns in relation to that.
I do hope so. I do hope so. That's a sore point. In any case, that basically, the other thing is the citation hearing procedure. We looked at that and it's going to cost thousands to put a full-blown online sort of system in place. Very expensive. And within my own mind, I don't think we're ever going to see the revenues that pay for it. So what we're looking at right now is an Excel system that we can set up ourselves. We'll be doing it pretty much with just paper. If it ever gets so busy that we can't handle it on that level, then it'll be time to start putting in an electronic system. But I think we could have some growing pains, some learning experience and get that going just by doing with Excel and some sort of a notebook and basically paper-oriented and really end up with a good grip on how it works and have it work just as well.
Yeah, you don't have to overthink it until we know that they're generating large amounts of money to justify it. And I think typically what I would expect to see on this, you might have a few citations issued early on in the process, but as people get the message, they would drop off quite significantly.
As, you know, if we got 50 in the course for a year, I'd be amazed. I do think people are going to learn quickly. And one of the things with that, we do have to have an appeal board. And I'm probably going to wind up recommending that we be the appeal board, maybe do it ahead of a Selectmen's meeting or something like that. And at least for a little while to get a feel, to get a sense of what's going on, what the questions are, how we have to answer them. We'll talk about that.
Yes. I just wonder if that would be legal to have the Board of Selectmen having another meeting under another same individuals. But yes, we can discuss it.
Be totally public, wide open to anyone that wanted. But anyway, that will work out. And that lastly leaves us with the Crisis and Strategic Communications Plans. And that's going to be meeting this Friday, 8:45 a.m. I'm not sure where in this building, but it'll be here. There's going to be a presentation by Sullivan Lachaine, who are big players in this sort of thing. And that'll be open session, so anyone can attend it. So that's 8:45 this coming Friday. And that is tomorrow, right, Linda? No, day after tomorrow. Day after tomorrow. It's a little late notice, but there it is. As I say, open session. They will go into executive session late in the game and will not be available after that for the public. Okay. Going into new business. We've got Catch Basins. And we've got the, Beth Lund, and her note here that bids for the subject project were open September 17, 2018. One bid was received, as listed below. According to the Town of East Haddam Purchasing Ordinance, SIT 106-3, all purchases or contracts above $15,000 should be based on at least two competitive bids. When at least two bids shall not have been received, the Board of Selectmen may, at the request of the town agency represented, voice the bid and direct said agents to identify and negotiate with at least two suppliers, one of whom shall be the sole bidder of the four eight. If there is only one such bidder for the best price, such negotiated purchase contract must be approved by the Board of Selectmen. She also has the option, I'm trying to see it here. The Board of Selects may, at the request of the agency. She has not issued that request. And she is here. I therefore recommend to award our Bruce Briggs at $24.99 per basin headwall. Our Bruce Briggs has been awarded this contract in previous years, very familiar with our drainage infrastructure. In addition, past performance has been a positive experience, both in quality of work and reliability. What she's doing is recommending that we go ahead with that one bid, which is her option. And has identified them. And with that, I'm going to make a motion to award the bid for the Catch Basin Cleaning to our Bruce Briggs at $24.99 per basin headwall for the period of September 1, 2018, August 30, 2019, with the option to renew on a year-by-year basis for two additional years with the approval of the town and the vendor. So, get a second on that?
I'll second it.
Okay. Any discussion?
Yes. So do we know what we have spent in the past for, or what? Let's do two questions. One is the rate in the past?
And that was what, 20...
$19.99 per headwall. It was for the last three years. Closest bid to that was Janet Sweeping, $23.99, and that was two years ago as well.
Well, do you have any idea how much we have spent on that in the past?
I don't have the full budget on it. I don't have the overall. I think it says in the bid, and you could probably figure, I think she says in the, and I put a copy of the bid with your attachments. I think the last page tells us how many. I thought it was somewhere in here where it said approximately. But I don't have that.
Okay. And there's no indication as to why we didn't get any other bids? Just no one was interested?
Check it out, too.
And this is what, roughly a dollar?
Eight other bids. In the previous year, I believe we got four bids in three years ago. Because we did exercise our option for the two additional years. We've bid three years ago, from 2000.
And three years ago, we got a bid of $19.99.
$19.99, $19.99 carried for that year and two...
But the next bid was $23.99.
But the next closest bid was $23.99.
So may I count why they're up there this time?
They were mailed and emailed to eight other bids.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I'm inclined to think that's probably what we ought to go with.
Yeah, I know we've been using them for years, so...
And they know their job and...
It just adds a few questions, so...
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
And on the same note, we went out for tree removal by contract. And we actually got four bids. And this is a cost per hour, $180, which gives us a crew, I believe, of two and a bucket. Bucket truck only, the, two, three of them bid on it, the Island did not. And an additional worker cost per hour, should that be necessary. And 180 was 70 per hour. Reynolds Tree Service came up with $200 an hour. And a cost per hour of 150 for just the bucket truck. And additional workers at $50. Eastland was 225. Bucket truck only was 200. Additional worker was $85 an hour. Witkowski's son was 250 an hour for the two guys in a bucket truck. And the bucket truck only was 200 again. And their additional worker was $50 an hour. And what Beth has is, "I recommend setting the award price as shown below. Bucket truck and operator cost per hour at 180." This is as we do with snow plowing. Bucket truck only cost per hour 150. An additional worker cost per hour at 50. It is recommended that a call-out list be created for the above contractors at the recommended prices. Subject to their accepting terms and conditions is defined by the town. And these include insurance, licensing, performance standards, other conditions per the town's performance requirements. I'm going to make a motion to accept the recommendation of the Public Works Director to set the tree removal rates as follows. Bucket truck and operator, 180 per hour. Bucket truck only, 150. Additional workers, 50 per hour. Get a second on that?
I'll second it.
Okay, and discussion?
Yes, I don't understand. Maybe this can be, hopefully, this can be explained to me. So she's recommending the bucket truck at 180 an hour, which is the lowest bid, and the additional worker per hour at $50, which is the second lowest bid.
Yeah. I fully understand that myself.
So, I mean, so it's two different companies and I don't think we're going to have a extra worker coming from one company and a bucket truck from another. So I think...
You're setting fee rates.
You're setting fee rates. So if they don't agree to it, then...
Right, they don't work for us. She came to you how many meetings ago and asked if she could do the tree removal work as the same way she does snow plowing, where everybody throws in their money and the town sets a rate. And if you want to work for the town to do this work, this is the rate you'll work at.
So my, so...
And I called her on it today and I said, "Well, so what happens when A, B, and C tell you I'm not going to do this work for that money?"
So, so...
That's up to you guys to discuss with her.
Okay, so I'm looking at this and saying, all right, so Reynolds is $200 for the bucket truck and operator and $50 for the additional worker. And I cannot think of a situation where there's a bucket truck and operator without a worker. It would be extremely unusual. And so if you look at the two rates there, it's 250 an hour for Island and Reynolds. So I'm not really sure what, and considering the number of potential trees we have here, I'm not sure why we just can't accept their two bids for their rates because it's the same amount per hour combined.
I, this was your recommended.
Again, you can do what you want to do. You can table it, or I won't say table it. You can postpone it to the next meeting until you have further questions for her. Or you can act on it.
Well, I would be in favor of postponing it.
I would, yeah, no doubt. I'd like to understand it better myself. It is a little strange in the way it's written. Oh, we will table that for the next meeting. Okay. We have a legal notice for a special town meeting. And to read it, "The electors and citizens of the town of East Haddam, Connecticut, qualified to vote in a town meeting are hereby warned and notified that a special town meeting will be held in the town hall on the town street in the said town of East Haddam, 8:00 p.m. on Tuesday, October 2, 2018, for the following purpose, to wit: to consider and act upon the recommendation of the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance to authorize the first selectman to execute a three-year contract from January 2019 through January 2022 on behalf of the town of East Haddam with Constellation Energy for electricity supply at the rate of .0839 per kilowatt hour. Item two, to consider and act upon the recommendation of the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance to accept a gift of a 5,000-gallon water tanker valued at $1,290 from Connecticut Water Company." And I'm going to make a motion to approve that call that I just read. Can I get a second on that?
I'll second it.
And discussion on that?
No.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
And we have a Gateway Commission changes that we're going to be looking at here. At the last Board of Selectmen's meeting, Harvey Thomas sent us a letter noting he no longer wished to be a member of the Gateway Commission. Crary Brownell had requested to be reappointed. All the terms are up, are up this summer. As a regular member to the commission, Mr. Brownell is currently the alternate. Two applications have been submitted to fill the alternate position, which would then be vacant. And Crary would be moving up to be the, I'm trying, regular member. And the way it works is you have two members, but only one is a voting member. And the regular member is the voting member and the alternate is there in case the voting member's not there, then he votes.
So he only replaces that particular individual?
Whoever's regular member in the event that the regular member is not present.
From that town, okay.
I was in that second position for a number of years when Harvey was there. Other times, it's been something that's been traded back and forth from time to time. And it works, you know, it works pretty well either way. So I'm going to make a motion to appoint Crary Brownell as a regular member for a two-year term to expire June 30, 2020, Connecticut River Gateway Commission. Get a second on that?
I'll second that.
Okay, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Got the experience. Now, we have two candidates who would like to become members as the alternate member. Joel Eide was interested, must be what, three years ago, four years? And basically, to get balance, Harvey was a Democrat, Crary is a Republican. And the idea has been in the past to always have balance on that, our two members. We selected Crary at that point. We have Joel Eide, who is a Democrat and very interested. I contacted him. He said, "Oh, yeah, now that the opportunity is there, I'd still like to do it" and wants to be on board. And he is a Democrat. And we have Richard Pettinelli, who is very competent and would like to be on it. And he is a Republican. And, you know, my feeling is that we should stay with the one Republican, one Democrat.
I'm less concerned about the party affiliation than, and this has absolutely nothing to do with Rich's qualifications, which are very good. But to have two members of the planning and zoning on...
That's true.
Planning and zoning on it, I think would be...
That adds to...
Potentially bias. So I would say, and I've known Joel Eide for many years, and I think he'd be, he does have a lot of experience working with federal and state organizations. So I think he'd be a good candidate, so...
Yeah, that note, I will make a motion to appoint Joel Eide as an alternate member for the two-year term to expire June 30. for the two-year term to expire June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty, on the Connecticut River Gateway Commission. Get a second on that?
I'll second it.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Sorry about that. Moving forward, we have tax refunds. And I'm going to make a motion to award tax refund, the amount presented, ninety-six dollars and eighty-six cents. Douglas Sanderson, can I get a second on that?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and once again, public comment. You want to add there? Yes.
When is Petty Colleen going to move forward?
I'm sorry.
When is Petty Colleen going to start moving forward with the work out here?
I've asked Beth about that myself, and she said that with what's happened this summer, and actually starting last spring with the Nor Easter's that came through and the trouble they gave us and how they slowed everything down, we're probably not going to be paving until next spring.
So what are they going to do for the winter with that road now that's a mess?
I, I can't really address that, I don't know.
My other question is, maybe you or Rob can answer this. A check for sixty-five hundred dollars was made out to an individual in town to put pillars up at another private residence on East Haddon, O'Connell Road Extension. When I asked why we were paying for pillars to be put up on a private residence, I was told that they had to remove the stone wall to pave the road up there, which was great, except for the stone wall belonged to the town, not the homeowner, and they left all the trees in front of the stone wall. And the paving doesn't go anywhere near it. And other stone walls that are closer to the road are still there. So I asked to know how this process took place and who approved it, and I was told there's no communications on it. But I was told we have a check's imbalance, and that we got two selectmen signed it, and now the check is your signature and Rob's signature and the treasurer's. So I'm trying to figure out how a private resident who's also a town employee got pillars for sixty-five hundred dollars at the bottom of the driveway with electricity for a stone wall to be removed that didn't need to be removed and wasn't theirs.
I, without knowing exactly where that is or what it is and seeing what happened, I can't even comment.
But you signed the check.
I'm sorry?
You signed the check, you're part of the checks and balance.
That doesn't mean I went out and I inspected the whole job. I'd be doing nothing but that if I checked every check that closely. I don't know where you're speaking of. I know there's been some discussion about something like that in the past, and it was resolved, and I'd have to find out just what it is.
Usually I check everything that seems out of line. I don't remember that particular item, so, and?
Can you give us a date on the check?
Oh, I don't have it with me, but I can give you pictures before, after, and I can keep the address, if that helps. The check, I believe, was right when they were doing the paving on the O'Connell Road Extension, so last fall.
Were you on board at that point?
Uh, well, if I was, it was just after I got on board, so.
That was, probably one of the first checks you signed.
Okay. I, without, without a lot more information, I can't even comment.
All right, I'll forward you the pictures and all the information.
Yeah.
Because then we would have the whole record, you know, all the documentation that went with it, and we could review it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other?
Hope you'll allow me. I was looking back at some of my questions in the last, last election. Another issue that I don't know if was addressed or not was the, our paid staff going across the bridge each morning for coffee.
Probably. They go across the bridge for a variety of reasons, including parts coming out of Lashix and whatnot.
No, this is seven o'clock in the morning.
And I don't know if they?
I brought it to the attention last meeting. We were strictly forbidden to go out of town with the ambulance vehicle or a fire vehicle, except for official business. And then also, our new paid firefighter, I don't know if you're aware, is on probation with Middlesex Hospital already at this time.
I have investigated that thoroughly. I've spoken to everyone involved within the town.
Yep.
Done their stories. I went back to Mr. Santa Cruz at Middlesex, and got confirmation and was pleased to discover I'd been told the truth right down the line. And I am very much aware of that.
All right. Going across the bridge for coffee each day, like I said, it was something that was held, we were held to a different standard when I was an employee here. And it seems like there's totally new standards. Volunteer mentality coming across into our paid staff is not good. I really, I really hope not to be speaking about this much, much further. I hope some of these issues are really addressed further and for the better service of our townspeople when things get back on track. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Just one quick one. If I can offer a little bit of suggestion as far as, you bring up a controlled substance testing program. MTAC offers a very good, it's Motor Transport Association of Connecticut, it helps with drivers, at least the CDL drivers anyway, I know the fire, it's a, it's a, another endorsement, I think, it's outside of the CDL requirements. But they do offer, it's kind of a consortium with Fleet Screen. Very professional, very discreet if handled properly, so, so offering that up.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else? Rob, anything to?
So at the Board of Education meeting, they had a discussion on potential consolidation of schools and growth, or lack of growth in both the population of the town in total and the school population. And as I'm sure most people are aware, there's been a study ongoing. Malone McBroom did the population studies and all that stuff, and related stuff, and I'm sorry, I've forgotten the name of the company that did the evaluation of the schools. But approximately, and I don't have the exact figures, I was trying to find the PowerPoint presentation, which they said would be up online, and I haven't seen it yet, but about eight, eight to eight and a half million to consolidate the schools, be the cost, and closing the elementary school would be the preferred option. And I think it's, that may have been somewhat shocking for a lot of people to be thinking about that value. And I'd be curious to know what the annual costs to, of the physical plant operation at the elementary school would be, because it seems like, I'm pretty sure it's probably, would take quite a few years to burn off eight million dollars. But I also understand that delaying, if we, if that is the decision that the town wants to go in consolidating schools, that every time you wait, generally the costs increase about five percent per year, somewhere in that range. So it's just, we're going to have to be aware that this will be, as it was public meeting, and there'll be much discussion about it, and be anticipating some questions on it.
Yeah, I look at the statistics, it's curious, there's a steady decline, and about five years out, it suddenly starts to turn.
Yeah, and then it stays basically stable. I mean, we've got a little blip in the school system right now, where the kindergarteners are coming in, which is, jumps up about thirty.
Your tenth grade class has a hundred students compared to five in every other class.
Yeah, so, exactly.
Which, so we've got this funny blip that's...
But I don't know how accurate, I mean, it's based on lots of different things, and...
You know, one of the things that keeps bothering me, when we built the middle school, we were basing everything on a nice straight-line projection?
Mm-hmm.
That we were sure we were going to follow. And clearly, that straight-line projection failed. Any prediction we make is going to be a crapshoot. I am inclined to think that the population is going to continue to go down, and we are going to have to find answers. I'm glad that this department, us, aren't really responsible for answering that.
Mm-hmm.
As something, at least it's one headache that I don't have to fight with.
At some point, we will.
Yeah, I mean, the whole town is going to have to deal with it.
Yes.
It's going to be very important to us.
So going back thirty years or so, when I was on planning and zoning, and they were talking about, I'm going to say about thirty years ago, actually, late eighties, early nineties, whatever it was, and they were, they came before the planning and zoning with the O'Conquin Trail. And I think somewhere in the minutes back then, I was an alternate, but I said, "Are we out of our mind?" Because to put a rapid development around the elementary school made absolutely no sense, and that we should have been looking down the road far into the future, and for expansion of the, either the school or playing fields or recreational fields or whatever. And there was no inclination for the town to do anything at that point, and we might be paying for it now again, so.
The opportunity to have a campus environment.
Right.
Which was, and once again, we did the high school, that was the thought, that we'd have a campus.
Well, that, again, that was the thought there, but I'm...
Then there wasn't enough land.
Lot of land, not much of it usable.
Exactly.
So.
You're right, it's, it's going to be a big problem in the future. Okay.
That's all I had.
I'm going to therefore make a motion to adjourn.
Want to talk about the budget?
Budget schedule?
The budget discussions?
Oh, that's on there too, isn't it? I've got surrounded with notes. There it is. That's why I lost it. Does any of that work for you?
This, this schedule?
Yeah.
That will work for me, so.
Okay, Sue has an issue with the twenty-ninth of November. That's the tri board here.
So I think we're...
Those five dates, I can put them on the calendar?
That's where I get the big bucks for a little bit of that.
Beating your head against the wall. Okay, so that works for everyone, except for at this point. We'll take it from there. Any further comment? Adjourn now?
Yes, you may.
Okay, motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.